And there's some other statistical information that we'll have ready to pass out later. But tonight, just be a basic operation on the police department. I went too fast on that. Okay. 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 Sorry about that. Okay, tonight, this is what we're going to cover. We're going to look at our programs and services, the mandatory, essential discretionary services, our staff positions, our key partnership agreements that we have, and then our 2013 plans and goals. Okay, we'll start off with our programs and services, our mandatory. This would include things like traffic safety, the enforcement investigation branch of that, criminal investigations. Now, those are done both by patrol and detectives, and we'll kind of break into that in more detail later. Child protective service referrals, sex offender monitoring, evidence processing, training. Training, we're mandated from minimum of 24 hours a year. We do way more than that, and that's really, we're getting pushed more and more to have more training in other areas. So it's probably more realistic, we're upwards of 80, 80 hours or so, but we have to have a minimum of 24. Code enforcement, and then animal control. Our essential programs and services would include just patrol. Our responding to 911 calls, our school resource officer, things like civil standbys. Civil standbys might be things that we go to where there's no criminal activity, but we're doing this for the public to maybe help prevent some criminal activity, like just standing by at a move-out or certain things like that where there's been some problems. And investigations. Programs and services that are discretionary. Not too long ago, the Sheriff's Department started a narcotic disposal program for the public. One of the things that they're seeing is people were, didn't have a way of disposing narcotics and other medications, and of course, they don't want these being into the sewer system. So we intake those for the public, and we have a disposal, well, it looks like an old mailbox beside the department where we weigh the, whatever narcotics or drugs that they have, package them, and then at a later date, we incinerate those. Our civil papers, civil paper service, our K-9 program, the bike patrol. We started bike patrol maybe three years ago.
Chief? Being a lawyer, you'd expect me to ask about the civil paper service. Do we serve papers for plaintiffs or someone wanting to serve a lawsuit? What kind of things do we serve?
Well, we serve, we do serve some civil papers, like restraining orders. Or sometimes there's, there's civil paperwork. We try not to do that. The county does that. They have a civil division, as you know.
Sheriff's office, yeah.
Exactly. But occasionally, if someone will show up at their, at their office, and they've got these paperwork, we try and do that as a courtesy for the public to do that.
Do we charge a fee for that?
No, we don't charge a fee. We're not set up to, I know the sheriff department only charges $75 to do that.
Plus mileage.
Which is why they come to us, sometimes.
I mean, well, it's a nice service. People are, you know, they're process-serving companies that do that, and the sheriff's office does it. You know, if we're going to do it, I guess it's just too much of an administrative headache to set it up to charge them the fee.
We, you know, if it's something we did on a routine basis, we might want to do that. It's, it doesn't happen that often. And when they ask, we try and just, you know, put them through the proper route. It's just occasionally, they will show up at the window and want to do that, and we do that as a public service. Okay, the reserve officer program, public outreach. We get involved somewhat of a junk vehicle verification process. That's not that often, and bike registrations for the people to bring those in. Okay, we'll look at the employees. We have three groups of employees that work out of our building. There would be the police officers, law enforcement, animal control, and code enforcement. And out of the police, there's, as of a couple of weeks ago, 19 FTEs that are sworn officers. That includes myself, as the chief. We have one commander, two sergeants, two corporals, 13 officers that work patrol. We have two officers that are working the detectives. And that's a rotated position. We bring them in for a period of four or five years, then rotate them back out into patrol. We presently have two reserve officers. At one time, we had a pretty, fairly substantial reserve program. It dwindled down for various reasons to, about a year or so ago, we had one. Got that back up to two, and for 2012, the sheriff's department did not run a reserve academy, so we weren't able to add to 2013. This year, we have two more in the reserve academy, and give us four. It would be my goal to get us up to a total of about six reserves. And then the administrative assistants. We have two full-time administrative assistants that work in the office. Okay, patrol assignments. So out of those 13 patrol officers, they, some of them have extra duties that are handed off to them. We have our K-9 program, which entails one officer. A couple of years ago, back in the day, we had two dogs, and now we're back down to one. We have one PIO officer, press information officer, one school resource officer. Field training officers, there's five of those. And the field training officers, when we have a new employee, such as we're going through right now, they're assigned to field training officer, and they're, we rotate one about every four weeks. So they'll be with a different officer. So they take on that extra duty of working with that officer and bringing them up to speed. So we'll do that with hired and with our reserves. Instructor officers. We have an example here, we have about six of them. Various things that they get involved with, from firearms to EVOC, which is our emergency vehicle operator course, defensive tactics, and less lethal devices. We've been sharing an instructor pool with CAMUS for some time. EVOC, for example, we put on our own EVOC to kind of save money and wear and turn the vehicles. And last year, we did our first joint venture with CAMUS and Battleground, where we kind of got everybody together, and we all did it just to work together and try and save a little bit of money.
Chief?
Yes.
EVOC, what does that mean?
It's the Emergency Vehicle Operators Course. And what it is, is traditionally, we would go out to PIR. The officer would take the patrol car that they're assigned to, whatever they drive, and there's instructors there that teach you different things in the vehicle, from high-speed driving to maneuvering to backing and that sort of thing. It's a great program, but we've actually seen more and more of the problems or incidents that we have with the vehicles are more low-speed, backing skills, that sort of thing. We don't traverse a great territory, unlike the Sheriff's Department of Vancouver, where they may be running code for great distances. While that's important to know how to do that, but we find that most of ours are slow-speed skills that we use every day that we need the most training on. Patrol officer responsibilities. These are just a few of the things that patrol officers get involved in. They respond to 911 calls, citizen complaints, vehicle accidents, emergency medical calls. They are first aid trained, and we have AEDs in all the vehicles, and so we have deployed those on a few occasions. They enforce federal, state, local traffic laws. They prepare and serve search warrants, arrest people, process the paperwork for that, transport prisoners or custodies to the county jail. They investigate burglary stuff, accident crime scenes, just like the detectives. In fact, anything that comes in, in most cases, is handled by a patrol officer. They'll take the initial report on it, and then if it's something that the detectives will go, it gets passed on to the detective. But they make that first initial contact. They provide traffic control for accidents, various events, runs, that sort of thing. They're required to testify in court. Of course, they investigate cold crimes, that sort of thing. We often assist neighboring jurisdictions when requested, and work in cooperation with other agencies like the FBI, the DEA. Now, again, the, yes?
I'm just curious. It says, "Transport prisoners to Clark County Jail." We house some prisoners at Skamania.
We do not transport them to Skamania. They'll go to Clark County and then be transferred after, after that.
Thank you.
Yes, whenever we can.
Yep.
We get them to Skamania. Okay, detectives. We have two officers working investigations. Both those officers are national and state-certified forensic interviewers. They investigate the major crimes. And this isn't all of them, but it would be things like first-degree assault, financial crimes, sex crimes, fraud, property crimes, crimes against vulnerable adults. They process crime scenes. They manage the sex offender registration program. And they operate as a member of the Clark County Regional Major Crime Team. So all of these things are things that require a lot of time that the patrol officers just can't do. So the detectives are not call-responsive, they're not being dispatched, they don't go out on the day-to-day calls. So they handle the things that generally are a little bit more time-consuming or of more serious nature.
Financial crimes, does that include things like identity theft?
And again, some of those are handled by the patrol officers. It just depends upon the degree and how complex the case is.
So would that be break-ins, when people break in your home or your cars and steal your things too, or is that?
That could, it could be. Again, if it's a home burglary or a vehicle prow, most of the time, the patrol officer is going to take that unless if it's determined that, let's say, we find out that, geez, there's been two or three other cases similar to this, looks like it might be the same group of people, they'll get handed off to the detectives to work. And it might be the officer that is working that case works with that detective, but primarily, it's going to be a detective case after that. Little bit about the K-9 program. Again, we have one dog, one handler. They're trained in drug detection only, so they're not a tracking, they're not a bite dog. They're trained to alert on descent of specific narcotics. They're certified in both Oregon and Washington. And again, the five odors that they're trained on are marijuana, heroin, meth, cocaine, and crack cocaine.
Is there a difference? See how naive I am?
Well, you know, that's a good question. It's not, apparently there is. Now, with marijuana, though, they can't tell us in any of these how much is there. So now with the new laws with marijuana, it's kind of put a little bit of a twist to how we deploy the dog with marijuana. They also work with other agencies. We've been called to assist CAMUS, the Sheriff's Department, Portland. In fact, when we first acquired Dingo, we were called to assist Portland, and they happen to be filming cops. So Dingo's been on cops.
Does he get royalties or something?
No, but he, but he made everybody look good because he found the hidden narcotics in the consoles.
Is Dingo Australian?
He's actually a Belgian shepherd.
Maybe Australian shepherd.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't name him, but we kept the name.
When, when the Sniff Dog program first started, at one point, I think there were actually three dogs in town, one that was in the process of being retired. But I know they used to hire themselves out at the Port of Portland fairly commonly and paid for the beginning part of the program that way, was my understanding.
That I don't know. One of the, one of the problems with some of the dogs that you'll see in the county is they're cross-trained.
Right.
And, you know, I'm not a K-9 handler, but my, my handler tells me that, that when they're assigned to do one task, they seem to do one better than the other.
Right.
And so consequently, as a result of that, even though some of these agencies have their own dogs, they called us because our dogs just work well. And, but still, right now, you'll see, I believe the sheriff, US Department uses cross-trained dogs, and they don't seem to be calling us. But in the beginning, we got called a lot from these various agencies.
Do we have one because one of the dogs died, or is it finances? Why are we, why are we down to one?
We're down to one, quite honestly, because of several things. One of them is because their handlers transferred into detectives. And we just didn't have enough work for two dogs. And now with the changes with sorts of seizure, that's even kind of diminished a little bit more. It's made it more difficult for us. Not that the dog's not valuable to us, but there's certain things we could do with the dogs that we can't do now. But it was a different day back then. We were talking maybe four or five years ago, and there was probably a greater problem with meth and things like that that we saw. We don't, is it still there? Yes, but we don't see it to the degree that we saw it before.
My understanding is that we don't see meth cooks very often.
You're correct.
About hen's teeth rare these days.
I don't know the last time we got called to investigate a lab. We've had some, but this is 2005, 2006, maybe. Administrative assistance. Again, we have the two, two FTEs. In addition to their clerical responsibilities, they process concealed weapons permits. And I have 33 in January. Those have just gone through the ceiling. We average maybe about 12 a month, but we've been very busy with those. One serves as our evidence technician, and she also handles our drug property seizures. They do fingerprinting for the schools and for the, for the concealed pistol license. One functions as our agency advisor for our access computer attack officer. And then they do a little radio dispatching as well. So we just couldn't get by without them. They, they do a lot.
How about the concealed weapons was done through the sheriff?
We do our own for the city. So if, and we process our own. I sign a lot of them. Okay, moving to animal control. We have two full-time animal control officers. They provide service, as you know, to both CAMUS and Waschewell. They enforce the city-state animal licenses or ordinances. They patrol city limits, respond to citizen complaints. One thing that they don't do that I just want to mention is we really do not get involved with wildlife. We get calls on wildlife from time to time, but we try and refer those people to the appropriate department. And they work with West Columbia Humane Society to increase the service level to the community. Just recently, they're taking cash receipt now so they can release some of the animals after hours.
Really? That's great. Glad to hear it.
Have we had any significant difficulties with exotic animals?
I can't think of any. Every once in a while, it's usually been snakes. But nothing, nothing too exotic. It seems to me, I can't remember, Brian or one of the officers had dealt with some sort of animal. I don't remember what it was. Might have been some turtle or something. Or some type of a reptile. But, no, we don't see too much of that.
I'm, I'm new on the council. We have, we are the animal control officers, city Waschewell employees.
They are, yes.
And we do inter-local by inter-local with CAMUS?
We do.
Okay.
And I'll kind of get into that inter-local, but yes.
Okay.
They're, they're Waschewell employees and provide service to both cities. Okay, code enforcement. One full-time code enforcement officer, she works Monday through Friday. She's responsible for the enforcement of local municipal building, land division, environmental zoning, land use codes, ordinances. We, most of her business is generally complaint-driven. She does deal with some on-view violations, and it's been the philosophy of the city ever since I've been here that we try and seek that resolution through cooperation and education. Any penalties or fines in that area would be kind of as a last resort. And I don't know that I've even seen anybody recently that's been fined. She does a really good job and works real hard to get people to achieve the goal, which is compliance.
How many complaints do we get a year?
You know, I don't track those. I could look into it for you.
The reason I ask, I just heard Vancouver's number a year, so about 1,200.
Oh, I better change that alarm, haven't I? It's telling me to go to city council.
Okay, we'll move to department policies.
One other question. I noticed it, maybe this is because I'm, most of my experience is with larger cities, but having code enforcement and animal control under the police department, is that a common thing? Is that kind of unique to Waschewell, or does other cities do it? And how well does it work, in your opinion?
I believe the code enforcement officer for CAMUS works out of the police department. Initially, code enforcement was under community development. There is a tie there, and I just found that we started, we're working a little bit closer with community development now. So the three of us get together, the police side, code enforcement, and community development to kind of address these issues and concerns. It seems to be working well. As far as the animal control piece, that's kind of unique that we have our own shelter here locally. So I don't really have anything to compare that with. But because they do have an enforcement action, it seems to make sense that it's under our umbrella. Department policies and procedures. Okay, we use a company called Lexipol for our policies. They're one of the leaders in risk management. They provide policies for police, fire, EMS. They use state-specific policies that are specific to each state. They're, they meet WASPIC recommendations. WASPIC is a recommendation that, that the Washington Sheriff's Police Association kind of sets guidelines for those things. And they continually update their policy to keep it current. One of the things that we do here, they talk about, there are scenarios that we subscribe to that gives the officers daily training bulletins that they review each day. This is like a, maybe like a four or five-minute reading that they read a scenario base, go through, and they test on it. So it brings their policy in front of, of the officers on a daily basis. And it seems to be working. We've come across several times where people have mentioned officers. I didn't even know that was in our policy. When you have a thick policy, they can't be expected to actually have it all memorized. They go through it, but this way, it's kind of a working, daily reminder of what certain policies are. And they talk about here, training on high-risk, low-frequency events. Okay, they'll take us to 911 dispatching. So CRESSA, or Clark Regional Emergency Response Agency, does all of the dispatching for the law enforcement agencies in the city, in Clark County, with the exception of WSP. We average about 20 to 25 calls per day for our department, and those calls are assigned by different levels of priority. There's five of those. The call priorities, priority one would be like an emergency, life-threatening, may involve a weapon or like a burglary in progress of an occupied building. A priority-two call example would be like a disturbance, where there's either someone's hurt or injured now, or there's a pending physical harm. It's time-sensitive. It's time sensitive or other medical emergencies. When we ask for help as an officer, that would fall under there or any time that weapons are implied. Priority three calls, not an emergency, but it's some officer needs to get there and, and just their presence can help deter a potential problem or an apprehension. Twos and threes are our main calls that we receive. Priority four, just no law enforcement action. Time is not really critical at that point in time. And a priority five, just like a public assistance type call. So it could be like a lockout. Somebody's locked their keys in their car. Okay, we're going to the key partnerships. We have several agreements that we work with. The first one being a master interlocal mutual aid agreement. This allows us to work in other jurisdictions and other agencies to work in our jurisdiction. A prime example of, of this interlocal agreement would have been the, the Stanbury case that we had over on F Street where we had everybody come over and help us out. And allows Camus to come over when we request them to help out and for, for us to go over there. We have another mutual aid agreement with the sheriff's department to handle misdemeanor crimes at Jemtagar School. The difference in this agreement is we actually get paid to do this. So we send the sheriff's department a bill annually to handle calls out here. If it's something of a felony nature, then they'll get involved in it. But just the basic misdemeanor type calls, we take those. We have a agreement for SWAT. So it's that is renewed annually. And pretty much every agency in the county subscribes to that policy. It's well worth it. It's a good insurance policy.
What kind of misdemeanors go on at a middle school?
At thefts, assaults.
You forget.
Yeah. Somebody stole my iPhone.
They have to call the police on those.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, they don't have to, but you know, any type of, yeah, any type of a disturbance, maybe an assault, that sort of thing. We'll go up there and take care of it. But it's usually a theft base. Pursuit policy, all of us with the exception of WSP operate under a, a pursuit policy that sets certain guidelines on what we'll pursue and how the pursuits are supposed to, to run. And that we all know basically what the expectation is of everyone in the area. Like I said, WSP does things just a little bit differently. Mutual, municipal court, we have two agreements, one with Camus and one with Clark County. The one with the county pretty much deals with the support staff, the judge, all the people necessary to run in municipal court. And with Camus to provide the infrastructure to operate the court, the building, phones, copyers, that sort of thing. And there'll be more on municipal court later, but this is just the basic structure that we're operating under right now. As I mentioned, the detectives are part of the regional major crimes. That is another agreement that we have with, with the county. And basically they cover any major crime that we have here or something that would outstrip our capabilities to investigate. And that covers the cost of those investigators for up to three days. And they can get a lot of work done in that period of time. We just used them recently for the incident that we had up in your neighborhood with the home invasion. They sent out a couple detectives and just helped us for a day or two. School district, they have an agreement with them, they cover half of our SROs wages and benefits. And then of course with West Columbia Gorge and Southwest Humane Society to accept our impounds from our cities. Where we're using West Columbia as our, as our primary facility and Southwest as a secondary overflow. Okay, almost done here. Two thousand thirteen goals and plans. One of those is to improve our partnership with, with West Columbia and to enhance those services to the community. Just getting the animal control officers working a little closer together with the people at the shelter. We're going to begin our process later this year for our accreditation through WASPIC. And further develop our goals as a part of our strategic plan. Work with the school district to improve and enhance safety procedures. We've started that already and we had a, recently several drills throughout the school district that we've been involved in. Enhance our reserve officer program. I'd like to get a better use of social media to communicate with citizens. And then continue to follow up and make recommendations on the records, regional records management system. You saw that in the paper maybe a couple of weeks ago. The record management system with Portland, Vancouver and the sheriff's department. So there'll be more on that in, in two thousand fourteen. We're still trying to figure out what the costs and everything will be on that. And I think that was it. Questions?
I noticed that our SROs are in the high school and that seems to be the norm. And with the incident at the elementary school in, um, what was the name of the city that, oh, just happened?
Sandy Hook.
Yeah, Sandy, I put Sandy and I thought, no, that was a hurricane, Sandy Hook. That was in elementary school and I realize you've done drills, I saw that in the paper and that's good. I'm glad to hear that. I know it's cost prohibitive to have a policeman at every site, but have you in your field discussed issues that could be going on at schools like middle schools and elementary schools? And we only have one high school, but we have quite a few other schools. And have you, I guess, let me reword that. Have you seen any other schools targeted except for that one elementary?
I, I haven't. I mean, it's, it could happen really anywhere.
Sure.
What we've tried to do is just prepare our response to those schools. They would all be treated the same. Our response, I guess, would still be the same. So unfortunately, again, the, the school resource, resource officer tries to spend a little bit of time in each school. But to try and predict when and where something might happen.
I realize that they're for a lot of reasons. Just crossed my mind recently that.
One thing that we, that we've done recently is we now have access to all the school buildings on our fobs that we use to get into our building. The best thing I think we can do at the moment is to deploy as rapidly as possible and to get access into the building as quick as possible. And certainly being able to get through a locked door without having to breach it or tear it down or break out a window speeds that process up. And we're pretty much good to go with either a one or two man team to get in and, and start investigating the source of the problem. We, we do not have to wait or we do not wait for a SWAT team or something like that to arrive. We make an immediate entry and get in and identify the threat. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but.
Well, it's, you know, it's the first. And I was curious, is it the only elementary school that's ever had a hit as far as a gunman? Always seen the pattern was high school, which is probably why SROs are, are in high schools now along with misdemeanors and all the other things that go on there.
I can't think of it off, off the top of my head, but we just prepared for, or try and be prepared for anything at any time.
Well, we appreciate that.
I think the point's taken that typically you think of the SRO, in our case and in Camus's case, for a lot of it being primarily at the high school, but they do get around all of them. The training that we do in the, in the school districts, we do jointly with other jurisdictions as well. Our folks train with Camus's on their buildings, they train with us on our buildings. There's, I think, I think as much as you can be prepared without having unlimited dollars to throw at it, you've got some pretty good procedures that are already in place. And the school district has been helpful in a lot of that as well as they go through and modernize the buildings and start putting the exterior doors on every, every room and marking every room, that type of stuff. It just makes things phenomenally easier.
I think what's happened is, you know, with the events recently is that it kind of got us to, to start working a little more closely and, and take a look at what we're doing as it really makes sense. This is the best way to, to do things. And I think they've, they've identified some areas where there's, they want to make some changes. But it's just having that communication with the schools and police to identify those and, and make those changes. The big thing was having that access. That was huge for us because it was really never allowed before.
Because your different jurisdictions, they didn't?
Well, they didn't want to give up for whatever reasons and I'm not, uh, they didn't want to give us codes or the access into the buildings on ours, on our fobs. We carry a little fob or a little credit, credit card that allows us into our buildings. So that same card which every officer has with them can now get into the school.
That's good news.
Anything else?
Other questions? Chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Got a question? What do you do with your spare time?
I sleep when I can.
You seem to have quite a mission there, huh?
Mr. Dunn, good evening.
Good evening.
You've got a public hearing that you want us to set for you.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this is a, um, a public hearing for the vacation of a number of streets down there in the port facility. There is a map in actually the council folder in Dropbox. Um, it's not on, it's not in the workshop folder, it's in the, the council meeting folder there. David's going to pull it up. But these are, these are some streets that really never got vacated there. This is more of a housekeeping item than anything in, in our opinion. We don't derive much benefit at all as far as right of way down there. We do have a utility easement that runs on the east side of Wesley Ford for a water line. But, but actually the, um, and actually this one's a better shot right here. You can see one of them runs right under the building and different things like that. So we, we, um, the, the port actually submitted a petition to us for vacation and, and we'll have to go through the public hearing process. And this is just to set the public hearing tonight and then later on we will come back before you to hold the public hearing. We'll have to put some signs out there and do, you know, our public notification, things like that. But we did get some appraisal for the parcels. We did get a legal opinion that we're not required to be compensated. So we can vacate these without any compensation back. But we did get some appraisals as far as fair market value, but it's going to be our recommendation that we, that we don't ask for compensation.
What do we typically do when we do vacations? Do we usually ask for compensation?
You do if, 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 I, I think if, if someone were to derive benefit, like if, you know, if that expanded somebody's backyard, you know, like an alley or something, if they went out to the center of the alley and they were able to do that, we would, we would, uh, we would ask for some compensation in that case. It's, I think it's normal to ask for compensation, but this is a situation that, I mean, if you look at the map, you can see that there's no real, we don't derive any use, there's no street there right now. It's more or less a, like I said, a housekeeping item to vacate these streets. And it does help Wesley Ford out. I, I think they have a project that they want to do. I think there's some money from Ford Motor Company is what the port described to me that if that right of way is vacated there on the east side of their building, then they can, they can add some access or, or do something. I'm not really familiar with what exactly they're, they're going to do because it would have to be left open there because we have a utility easement.
I think you showed the right aways are running through buildings.
Yeah, yeah, see it, see it right there. It runs right through Wesley Ford's building, so.
About four years ago, when the new port commission came in.
Does happen.
They started looking at a number of, of issues. First with Parker's Landing Park is where it first came up. And quickly discovered that the facts on the ground bore absolutely no relationship to the facts on paper. That some of the, the street actually is in, in the park. Obviously some of it runs through the Wesley Ford building. Other places that it says there's a street, it's a grassy field with fences across it. So the port began about four years ago to, to look at this all and say, you know, how do we rearrange this, these pieces so that it makes sense? One thing is to protect the park. And some of the other things as part of their ongoing master plan and frankly, having a dedicated street down the middle of their master plan is a problem. And so the port's been working on this for, for a while and, and it's, it, I think everybody pretty much agrees that it's not, it's more than just housekeeping. It makes such good sense to fix this problem, which the paper just never reflected the facts on the ground.
Well, I just, before we waive compensation, I would, I would like to have some, some findings or some very, because I worry about someone else coming along later and saying, well, you let the port off of, without compensation and now we're, we're, why don't you let me off too? So I think we need to be able to draw a distinction very clear that this is a one time deal or we don't seek compensation. That'd be my only recommendation.
Yeah, you can see in this case, the argument being it's public dollars versus public dollars. I would think for any private vacation of a, of a street. You'd be surprised if you can, you can forego that, but.
As a former licensed real estate appraiser in the state of Oregon, there's no change in use. So there's not really a change, there's not really a value involved.
If it's land and we're giving up any right to it, I've got to believe that there's.
No, it's not clear, it's not clear that you have a right to it anyway, but anyhow.
If we didn't have a right to it, we wouldn't be vacating it or being even asked to vacate it.
Well, that actually is a pretty complicated question that I've had to deal with frequently and, and you're both right. I'll put it that way.
Jim, A Street you have going over to, only partially over, does that not go all the way over to the, where the C is in Port of Camus, Washougal? Does A not continue all the way through there?
Yeah, it does. You, you see, um.
I see it over on the east side, but I don't see it on the west side.
Yeah, A Street continues through, so.
Okay, so that they're not asked, that they're not asking or we're not wanting to vacate that portion of it?
No, no.
And I assume it's just a typo on there that says state route one oh nine?
Yeah, that's an old, well, you know, enabled.
State route what?
Exactly. Yeah, it's SR fourteen there. This is a very old version. So we did this overlay because these streets are so old in there that all of these names are a little bit different.
Do you have a conclusion?
I assume that that used to be state route one oh nine. I was hoping somebody remembered that, but.
Do you have any conclusion whether we own this property in fee or is it just a right of way? Because that, that's an issue that comes up too.
Yeah, it, it, it's a right of way. It's not fee simple.
I would hope so. If you're building, building zone.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's, it's a right of way. And the, the property is owned by the port. We just have the right of way there, so we don't have any maintenance. There's not really streets there, it's, so.
Were there ever, to your knowledge?
I don't know. I don't know, don't know, I'm sure there were at one time.
No, not necessarily. Streets can be laid out and they're never, they're never built.
Yeah, maybe so, maybe so.
There, there's some evidence of wagon tracks, given that, that Parker's Landing Park sits on donation land claim number one in the territory of, of Washington.
But we ought to get Roger here to tell us about all this.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay, so we'll be dealing with that tonight to set the hearing.
It's, it's not on the agenda, this was just a heads up in the workshop. The staff still needs to determine exactly when the hearing's gonna be, there's some other things to wrap up. So in two weeks, on your agenda, we'll be uh, setting the public hearing. And it'll just be on consent and then we'll have a hearing when we get to that.
Okay, so it may not be the twenty second?
No, it's, it's not on the council agenda tonight to set the public hearing. So that's a draft that we're just working for.
Gotcha. Jim, thank you. Jennifer, you've got an update for us on information technology.
I even have a hard copy for you, if you could pass it. Wait, not that one.
Just for me?
That might be the secret squirrel handwritten one, if it's not, it would have been all right. Okay, so we've been working very diligently on our IT um, area and wanted to provide an update. We're gonna talk about the background of IT, where we've gotten to where we're currently at, um, the process to date, the new model that we're working toward, and then the next steps in timeline. So in the past, IT's been a contract, uh, kind of built of a couple contracts with a private company that does the day-to-day type issues, the loading of the software, um, that type of stuff. And then we have an annual maintenance agreement with our HTE software vendor. So that's kind of a combined approach with the P, the professional service agreements, PSA's.
Is it HTE you said?
I actually don't know what HTE stands for, but uh, it's our financial and permitting systems. Uh, which is backed by Sun Guard.
I'll resist the temptation to say the T stands for trouble.
Right here in River City.
I could Google it really fast, but I won't.
Right here in River City.
Um, with the, the growth the city has gone through, both in the number of software uh, products that we operate with, the number of licenses with Office, um, the number of employees, our needs have kind of changed. So we've been researching what the best option will be, um, moving forward. We've gotten numerous expert opinions. Um, we started with Evergreen School District and talked to their head of their IT department. Um, we also spoke with the city of Vancouver, Patrick, I believe he's the head of their department as well, director. Um, to get their opinions as to what our, you know, we gave them our in- information, this is our scenario, this is where we're at, this is what our difficulties and challenges have been, and they were very open and, and candid with us with those discussions. City of Vancouver actually came in-house and did a, a very nice analysis for us for free to show us kind of where our weaknesses are and some of the things that need to be addressed right away, some of the challenges that it'll take to get those implemented, um, and just gave us a lot of good information. And actually started broaching the topic of um, doing a potential interlocal agreement with Vancouver to where they could assist us in our technology arena. That unfortunately fell through, it sounded really good, um, they were gonna kind of become our new contract partner. Um, unfortunately, they had a couple personnel changes to where they weren't able to follow through with that. So we started going down another path of trying to decide, okay, should we come in-house, should we find a different contractor? What's the right option? Um, knowing that both experts that we discussed it with suggested that we go in-house. So that's what we're weighing it on, um, going in-house or contracting with a bigger pool of folks. Um, the city of Camas came to us and said, hey, we heard that you were talking with Vancouver. Why don't we sit down and discuss, see if we could work out a mutual agreement between the two cities since we're so close um, together, we could benefit. But with the current changes at the city of Camas with the city administrator just starting, um, she has a couple more important items on her agenda, um, to get going with. And so the timeline of our need, which is now, um, versus their need of, that would be great, give us a little bit of time, um, kind of put that potential to maybe later, um, we'll readdress it at a future date. So we kind of took a long road to get back to where we started of um, needing to bring this vital service in-house. Um, it's something that we feel very strongly about and are looking, um, forward to. Our current agreement with IT Pros Northwest actually expires mid-May. Um, so that's kind of the driver of the, the timing. So we need to make sure that we can work through this and get these changes made quickly. Um, we're gonna create two full-time equivalent FTE positions. Um, the titles and kind of the placing is based on a market analysis of where a city our size, what people they should have based on our size and needs, and then kind of where the, the pay range is averaged out. Um, so we're expecting kind of a senior level analyst type position at the NU four, which is the mid-manager range, and then an IT desktop support person, which would be a union position. Again, we're still working out some of the titles and ranges with Jeanette, but um, we hope to have those forward shortly. Um, so kind of the, to sum it up, before, all of our services were provided by professional service agreements. The after picture will be, the services will be provided, provided in-house with the, less PSA money, uh, but we will still need the Sun Guard agreement, the annual maintenance to operate that side. But we do get some, if you're persistent and find the right person, which we finally did on the finance side, um, we get very good assistance with uh, their customer tech support folks. His name is Gordon and I hope he never leaves.
How old is Gordon?
I'm not sure. But um, he's been very attentive to all of our strange scenarios that, that we've run into. And uh, we just need to find his counterpart on the community plus side so that we can um, get just as good service over there.
Would he like to work for the city?
I think he's based in Florida, so I'm not sure that he would come to Washougal. But uh, that would be, that would be wonderful, I would be very, very happy if, if he would be interested.
He's tired of the suburbs.
Um, and then of course, the bottom line is that all of these costs that we're proposing are contained within the current existing budget. So the next steps will be, um, at the next council meeting, which is in two weeks, we will have a resolution to change the personnel policy to add the new um, management, or not management, NU, non-represented position to the personnel policies. And then um, we'll also need a memorandum of understanding with three oh seven W to add the new union position for the mayor to sign. We're gonna advertise the non-represented position, uh, upon approval, the next day, we'll get that going. Um, again, the timing's kind of critical. We're gonna interview and hire the non-represented position first to transition with our current vendor. Um, some of the institutional knowledge that needs to be transferred over, very important background, our passwords, those types of things that we need to make sure, um, we have access to before um, the agreement ends. And uh, we thought it was important to hire that position first since the desktop support person would actually report to them. So that way they can be part of that hiring process to make sure the fit is correct and that the skills offset each other since it will be a two-person F, two FTE show. Um, but we will advertise that union position because we will need the desktop support person as soon as possible as well. So that's where we're at and we're looking forward to getting um, our IT world wrapped up and put together and then have a new team member in place and move forward with that.
Questions, Dave?
You mentioned this is a mid-manager level position. Is that a working manager?
Yes, oh, definitely.
Okay, he gets in there and gets his hands dirty?
Yes, definitely, with two, with two FTE there, that's why we want to make sure to have offsetting skills. Because the desktop person will need to have some assistance in those types of um, fields while, I mean, sooner or later, that person will have to go on vacation or call in sick, so they'll have to offset each other a little bit.
Great, thank you.
I would say the only reason that the word management even enters the equation is because of the highly technical nature of this work, the higher level person needs to supervise the lower level person as opposed to say Jennifer doing that supervision, just because it's a highly complex technical specialty. So that's the only reason that word entered into the equation, but primarily it's a senior analyst that does work all day. Oh, and supervises this person too.
And our intent is that both of these individuals will fall under Jennifer's finance department, so ultimately she's, Dave, we, we forgot to do that part. Paul, you had a question? We're gonna insulate ourselves from IT so that we were never really responsible.
I'm a bit of an IT person myself, so I'm curious, have we developed at this point a list of hardware and software that we need to replace? Or do we need to wait for our senior analysts to do that?
That will be one of their first priorities will be to go through with our current vendor, inventory, everything, have a list and get that information all together. Um, we do not currently, we have kind of, we, we do have information, but it's not as thorough as it should be and definitely not a replacement type schedule. But there will be, um, that is definitely one of the top tasks of this individual.
It's, it's, it's a small thing, but my world would be so much more convenient if we had a much more modern version of exchange.
Yes, that is definitely on the list as well, updating all those licenses.
Or switching to Macs, that would be, that's not my world. Ben, um, you say it's within the current budget, what's the net? I mean, is this gonna be more expensive or less expensive than what we're spending now on for IT services?
It will be slightly more expensive than what we're spending on services, um, but the services have been underfunded and inadequate over um, several years.
And we knew that going into the budget process and that was one of the justifications and we, we chatted a little bit about that of why the increase was in there, for the anticipation that we'd be coming forward on this site.
And knowing some of the problems that happen in larger, like the county just had a big meltdown with a virus last week, I don't know if you heard about that?
I think it, we actually got it here.
Yeah, we had, I think we had, I had a, I had a virus on my computer at work too, but um, do we have, there are things that ha, that hap, that I'm sure they're gonna happen, they're gonna be on the capability of our two new employees. Do we have some arrangement with some contract or some level to assist them of? We had a meltdown?
We are going to, um, exactly who that will be, we have to determine. We have uh, very generous offers to do that from Vancouver, Camas has said the same, there are a number of private vendors. I think we want to uh, be as nimble as we can be with that. But I, I would anticipate over the next period of time that you might see an interlocal agreement come through. We just need to figure out exactly who will do that. We're pretty intrigued by Vancouver as a backstop. Um, we just need to loop back with Patrick and make sure that that's gonna be viable.
Have, have we talked to IT departments like at Clark College or WSUV?
We talked to um, very specifically and in-depth with um, K twelve, Evergreen, uh, their director, and we talked um, uh, in, in excruciating detail with uh, Vancouver. We talked quite a bit with Camas as well, and then I've had conversations with uh, peers and colleagues from a, a number of different sorts of cities. And um, got all kinds of different advice about what we might do, but.
The reason I mention it is because there's probably no place that knows more about antivirus work and anti-malware work than a college campus. And um, so that, that's what occurred to me right away is that.
As a backstop possibility.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, the, the, there is certainly expertise on those kinds of things uh, at, at Clark and at WSUV and Mount Hood Community College, PCC.
Could talk to Bob, Mike certainly could talk to Bob.
I think we're more concerned right now with the system just crashing and dying than viruses, but.
That could be a reason why we crashed.
Yes.
Oh yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
We didn't need that server anyway.
Yeah.
They're making viruses for the version of Windows we're using because it hasn't been used since nineteen ninety-three.
Right, that's one way to stay under the radar.
Messing with it?
To drive a horse and buggy.
Actually, it's been updated to two thousand and three.
Okay.
But Microsoft hasn't supported it for five years, so.
Other questions for Dave or Jen on this thing? Jennifer?
Yeah, I'll just add, do you want to look at the budget? And is this falling under data processing?
Correct. And.
I see the increase.
So there's currently um, two hundred thousand that we've slated for that. In the past, it was about a hundred and forty-five thousand. So with the reorganization of the finance department and some of those things, that's what we had in mind moving forward was for some of those cost savings to come here. Um, and then based on our analysis at this point, it'll be about twenty thousand more than that. Um, but we're able to pull that from other reorganizations and reprioritizations, so it is all within the.
Additional twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand for the IT equipment replacement fund. That was a transfer from, oh, it's just general government.
Right, that's, that was a reserve, I, that's one time.
That wasn't for this though, that's for the server replacements that we know are, and some of that other equipment that we know is gonna need.
That'll be the seed, that'll be the initial funding that uh, the team will have to solve the problems. Will be that twenty-one, um, and then hopefully there won't need to be much more than that. If there is, we'll have to come back and, and do something, potentially with supplemental.
How big is Camas' uh, IT department, how many people do it?
They have three. Yeah, when we, um, way back months and months and months ago, when we first were advised that the size and scope and complexity of um, our organization really warranted an in-house team, we did some comparable analysis of uh, cities of our size and scope and complexity and we found anywhere from two to four FTEs as the team. And the, the less number of staff, the more professional service dollars that there were. It became quickly evident to us that this was an area where we really needed to step up. So we identified two and uh, after Vancouver looked at us very closely and a more cursory look from uh, the Evergreen School District colleague, they assured us that two FTEs fully engaged and fully active would be the minimum and the adequate team necessary to deliver quality IT services for an in-house team. The key really will be to find the right individual for that senior position. I'm gonna get a little bit out of my technical comfort here, but there's network analysis and network issues, which are kind of a specialty. And then there are system analysis issues. One's a little hardware firmware, setting it all up. The other one's more the systems that run on that hardware. And there are experts in both of those fields. However, we are, we were assured that there are professionals that can live in both of those at a high level. And that's the type of individual that we need, uh, to be that higher level person. But they also have to be a person who's willing to crawl into your desk and go, oh, it wasn't plugged in. Or whatever, whatever the issue will be for your desktop support.
That's usually the case with me when I.
And me, so that's why.
It's broken, it's broken.
Who, who will do the interviewing? Who has the expertise among us to?
We don't.
Recognize their capability?
We also have very generous offers from our colleagues who are technical experts to uh, do everything that they can to help us ensure that we uh, attract and select the right individuals.
From Camas and Vancouver?
Camas and Vancouver, Evergreen School District and others.
Great.
Jennifer?
No, I was just gonna talk a little bit about our website and, you know, how that will kind of, will we get someone that's designer as well or that won't be included, or is this strictly support?
It's, um, that's part of the whole IT package, but whether, it'll depend on what their skills are. Um, Rose has received quite a bit of training and has done a lot of work on our website. Um, so that'll be something that will just have to work out depending on who we hire. But in a perfect world, it would be part of their skill set and. But in a perfect world, it would be part of their skill set and, or they can learn. But yes, it is part of the IT package and we're not anticipating doing an additional contract at this time.
And for now, I think we're mostly in, I don't wanna call it the maintenance mode to, to diminish the importance of it, but it's loading information into a designed template. If we need to add additional pages or redesign pages or, and I'm sure, you know, two years from now, the technology we currently have will be obsolete. We'll probably have to do one-time hits if they don't possess that skill set to go out and have somebody help us with that. And we, you know, we would plan ahead for those things and budget for those one-time expenses if they come up.
Well, I'll be glad to help you out if you want some assistance there on that hiring.
Thought you were offering for the website.
At first I thought you were gonna design our website.
I use that website that's free and I gotta just plug in your, your picture and put in a title.
We've been there, done that.
Other questions?
That's awesome.
This stuff's gonna be coming back to you fairly quickly, um, I think right now we're mainly waiting for Jeanette to get back from vacation to get a lot of things moving. But we have, uh, spoken with our current vendor and they're aware of which direction we're going. There was communication out to all of the city staff today to let them know that we have decided on a path forward and we're moving there quickly, so. I think, uh, Jennifer and Jeanette will probably try and make sure that you've got information as far ahead of time as possible as in regard to the creation of the, uh, position themselves and the MOU that we've gotta get together with the unions, so. If you have any questions as we go, certainly kick it to them. Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
We're at that opportunity again, uh, anyone from the public that would like to address council? Martha?
Can you hear me now? I notice everyone's adjusting to daylight saving time, I see yawning and nodding. I saw Chief over there, no, I'm not, sorry, Chief. I know you're tired, but I was too, so it's okay. I know it's a tough adjustment, especially when you're coming early and it's really, you know what time it was last week. Um, I wanna thank you for your town hall on Saturday, uh, that was a great event. I think that it was long in coming and I'm glad that there was a push for that. I'd love to see more events where the public is involved and they get to come and express their opinions and see what you're doing. I wanna thank city administrator David Scott for your fabulous presentation and your maps and all of those things which are great information, so. Further feedback to come from the public, I swear there will be, but it was good information, so thank you. And to the mayor for his running the tight ship and getting everybody ongoing rules and keeping them signed up and with few exceptions of people running over, did a good job. So thank you for that, um, I appreciate having all the opportunities that you give to the public, as you well know. That's one of the things that I really push for is for you to get information from your citizens and so thank you so very much. Wanted to check to make sure there was not any misunderstanding in regards to right to attend versus right to speak. I think there was a little bit of a mix up there, you know, you do have a right to attend versus, when, when you have the Open Public Meetings Act. We don't have the right to speak as citizens, unfortunately, we'd like that, it'd be nice to get that included, but right now it's the right to attend only, so thank you for this privilege of speaking to you.
Thanks Martha, anyone else that would like to comment to council? Okay, I've got some items that I'll bring up, uh, during council meetings, uh, mayors report any items from council themselves? Dave?
Based on what we heard at the, uh, town hall the other day, I'd like to move forward on that resolution, uh, opposing the light rail. And bring it forward to the council, uh, two weeks from tonight. And I've got, uh, a couple of drafts that I can provide to Dave, Dave, you're awfully good at writing, writing these resolutions. You add something to every draft that, uh, you're provided, thank you for that.
Well, we do, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, we, we sort of agreed when we would have this format, that we would not be introducing, uh, something for the first time at a workshop and then following that up with a potential vote, that was sort of something that we talked about. So is there any way I can, we can get copies of that tonight, the potential?
I had in mind the resolution would be brought forward two weeks from tonight.
For workshop or for council meeting?
For a vote.
Oh, for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
So I introduced it at the workshop tonight.
Oh, tonight, okay.
And it'll be written in the next couple of weeks, brought forward to the, to the workshop that night. And for a vote after that.
What you're expressing is not to vote on it that night, but to put it off to the next meeting?
Well, um.
Depending on what's in it or not in it or?
I thought maybe we would have something to look at tonight and discuss at the workshop, I don't know, I, maybe I'm.
Kinda tight.
I'm sorry.
Paul?
Yeah, I, maybe I misunderstood what, what you're saying, but yeah, I'd like to workshop it in two weeks, which means that we would then go to a vote in, to, meeting after that.
Oh, right.
Which is.
It's, it's becoming time sensitive to get, to get it done, to get it to the people that need it.
It's my impression when we brought the two meetings together, that we would workshop for pre, the next meeting. And that that meeting we would workshop for the next meeting, so we would be leapfrogging.
But there was a provision for time sensitivity, was there not?
I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that.
We, from an administrative level, I know in, this may not answer your question there, if there were things that were very light in nature, setting public hearings, that type of stuff that we hadn't necessarily chatted about. We kind of, I wouldn't say reserved the right, but mentioned that we may bring those forward for workshop that night action the same evening. But again, there are things that are meant to be fairly innocuous or housekeeping items, if there are things that are meant to be more in-depth. We're anticipating from ourselves, not, meaning, uh, we couldn't take different direction from the council. That we would not ask you to consider those and within a couple of hours after that to try and digest and get your arms around that and vote on it, so. Administratively, that's how we've been moving forward on it, Conaty Joe?
Just, it seems that, um, we, we talked about Saturday, you know, what's, what's the heartbeat of the people. We have resolutions from different organizations, different agencies already that we can glean from.
I don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Conaty Joe, I don't have any resolution.
When I say we, I mean.
Nothing has been given to me.
No, I'm saying, when I say we, I don't mean that it was given to you, I mean, it's online, uh, it's been distributed different ways, the county and Battleground's working on one and Yakult's working on one, and so it's all in process and so it's out there if we wanted to get it. So my, my question is, tonight's a workshop, we discuss it tonight, we, we give these, these resolutions to Dave, David. I'm just curious about if this is proper, could be proper procedure, this workshop tonight, we, we get it from a rough draft from a Dave between now and two weeks from now, in order to have that opportunity. It seems that, I, I think this is something we need to discuss, we now have two weeks of time. Usually we get a packet on Thursday late or Friday, we gotta be ready by Monday night with that. Possibly during the week, we could get it by next week, he could work on it during the week, we could get it by next week. Give us time personally to, uh, add question, come in, talk about it, and be ready a week from that. Isn't that the same as having a workshop on it tonight? Taking action in two weeks?
It's, that would be up to council, it wouldn't be in my mind, I wouldn't consider you workshopping it until you actually have a document in your hand that you're deliberating on, that you're being led through, that type of stuff. Certainly the introduction of the, of the.
Maybe, maybe not, it depends, um, I, I would like, my understanding of the time sensitivity of this is, there's a crucial, there are crucial events going on in the Washington Legislature now and it's a, there's a very high probability, or I should, I shouldn't say high probability, but there's significant possibility that the, there'll be no funding for this project and to the extent that our resolution might influence that, that's, is that the time sensitivity we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, um, my concept of this was to hear what the public had to say on Saturday and then throw out ideas of what we would like to see in a resolution and what we would like to see the conclusion of that resolution be.
Should be worked.
And that's what I thought we would do tonight.
I agree.
And if there's a time crunch, uh, in two weeks, then we ought to be open to doing a workshop before this and then a, a vote immediately after, make an exception to our rule because of the time crunch, which was provided for.
I have copies on internet of, uh, Oregon resolution of the county commissioner, our county commissioner's resolution. The letter from our Congresswoman of the questions that she has, and those are the things that I think we could easily chew on tonight. I could, I could forward them to you right now, we could be ready to discuss it in council, um.
The, the problem is the Open Public Meetings Act, that we can't talk about this amongst ourselves, I mean, once we get a document.
Tonight, in a meeting.
Once we get a document, then we can talk about the document in a public meeting. But we can't talk about the document amongst each other.
I wasn't suggesting that.
Until, until we're in a public meeting and we don't have a document.
That's what I'm saying, we would need to come in and talk to Dave on our own, I wasn't suggesting we meet during the week.
Well, but, but I, I just think that there's great value to a discussion within council. And we're, we're tying an arm behind our back if, if, if we can't talk with each other about it.
Understand what you mean.
Joyce?
Well, I'm having a problem, we changed the meeting to having every other week for whatever reasons, like that happened, I was not here for the vote. But we were gonna leapfrog, we were never gonna vote in a meeting on what we worked shot that evening.
From the administration's proposals, yes, that's true.
So that is how I understand it and there may be all sorts of documents available, I have nothing. So I want time, there isn't a Washougal resolution out there. And I would like time to see the Washougal resolution because that's what I would be voting on. So I just feel like we changed this meeting and, and now we're changing the change, I, I don't think that's productive.
We're not, the mayor said he wouldn't bring it forward in that manner, but the council didn't make any promises in that regard and I'm suggesting that we do based on the time sensitivity. I'm trying to respond to the requirement to do something.
Then why didn't we have it in our packet this evening for this workshop, because I really.
Because there wasn't time to write one between Saturday and today. The research was done, the writing wasn't done, and besides, I don't think it's appropriate to hand it to Dave Scott and say, on Saturday afternoon or Sunday and say, sure like to see this thing tomorrow night, Dave.
Before I could write a resolution, I would need, I would need to understand.
Parts and pieces of it.
What the resolution is supposed to say, I have not received any direction from the council as to what the, uh, uh, resolution would say. That could happen tonight, I could either right now or during council comments in the regular meeting, at the end of the regular meeting, uh, a little bit later this evening. I could certainly receive direction from the council, I could certainly, uh, pull together a resolution, I can get some help in doing that from a number of different sources. And, um, and then I would, uh, be able to send that out to you as quickly as I possibly could. You would have to indulge the process, so to speak, and what your set of expectations was from us, as the mayor has mentioned, to consider it in a meeting in workshop and then vote on it that same evening, that would be, uh, not typical probably for resolutions that are policy statements, but it.
Significant policy statements?
You could do it, you, you, you would be allowed to do that, there's no rule that says you can't do that. Examples of things that would happen like that, if we knew precisely and there's still some missing, uh, moving parts to the hearing on the vacation. But a great, a great example of something that would be presented to you in workshop and then voted on, uh, actually as part of the consent agenda would have been that. We would have the, uh, it's, it's a very straightforward sort of a thing, it's not really an expression of the policy of the council to see a vaca, a vacation, or setting of a public hearing, you're not, you're not granting the vacation, but you're just setting the hearing to do it. We tell you about it in the workshop and then on consent at seven, you'd set the hearing, then you would have a hearing later and we'd have another workshop to talk to you about it prior to the hearing and then you'd have your hearing and then you would take your action. It's that minor type of thing that we would do that with, but there's nothing to prevent you from doing that in this case.
A question, um, if we were to give you tonight at the council meeting, uh, two or three resolutions from, uh, local agencies that have done this as a guide to what might be included in it, would that suffice as, as guidance from the council?
Even, we've got five minutes left in this meeting, even if folks around the table wanna give us some guidance of what the, what the highlights are that you wanna have in the resolution, that should be, I won't say completely sufficient, but it would get the ball rolling.
Look at my Facebook page.
There's one.
I think the county resolution, uh, would be one possible source of guidance, uh, the Oregon GOP has done one on, on, uh, the CRC and Light Rail, which would be another one.
Are we, are we talking light rail or are we talking the CRC project itself?
Combination of the two, 'cause light rail is included in the CRC project. That's, that's a different thing.
I, I, I would wanna know, you know, I, I, to, uh, council member Lindsay's point, yes, it's an extraordinary step to consider a major item in workshop and then vote on it that same night. I'm reluctant to do that and before I would agree to do that, I'd wanna know what the time constraint is and whether that two weeks is critical. So I want some explanation about that before we proceed.
What I'm really asking for is that we, we verbalize what we heard on Saturday from the public, that's what I'm asking us to do as a council.
You heard, um.
Was unanimous.
No, and the, the council can go either direction, um, I heard some concerns in regards to tolling on two oh five and potentially having that in a resolution, that we would be against tolling on two oh five. I believe it would be accurate to say that you had, whether you talked in regards to the folks from the, from Washougal or all of the folks who spoke, I believe it would be accurate to say that majority of the folks were not in favor of light rail. In regard to the question of the CRC, I don't believe we heard that from the notes that we took, it was actually five to four. The bridge.
I've got it eight to three.
That's, that's why we tape things.
It's on the ear of the beholder, isn't it?
Yeah, for the most part, it's, it's on the tapes what the comments were and that type of stuff, but we were kind of keeping track of, you know, where people were standing on different things. So, and, and that's why I said it's, it's important obviously for us to know what it is that you want contained in a resolution and to make sure that we've got the proper backup to be able to do that.
Well, God, what I would like to see is I'm, I, uh, do not favor the CRC project because of the potential of tolling two oh five. And if two oh five isn't told, it will also adversely impact the traffic on, uh, two oh five because of the increased, uh, from the tolls on I-5, people will be diverted there. I don't see how that is possibly not the case. I also, uh, would like to be able to express to, uh, the, uh, decision makers on this project with the oppo, the opposition to light rail that's been demonstrated in Washougal, uh, both at our forum and also in the results of, uh, measure, measure one in November, uh, twenty twelve. I'd like, I'd like to get that in there, um, those are, uh, those are my main points. On, oh, and the other, the other point I'd like to raise is what, is what, this is what I learned from the, the, uh, the meeting on Saturday is. the meeting on Saturday, is that, uh, the CRC project is likely to soak up all, or at least a substantial amount of the local transportation dollars. And I think it's, it would be best if Washougal got some of that instead of it going to the CRC, such as for Highway fourteen. And so those are the three points I'd like to see addressed in the resolution.
Joyce?
Go ahead.
No, I.
Paul?
Refresh my memory. I thought Measure One, that the majority of the funding was actually for Bus Rabbit Transit in the fourth plane corridor.
It was maintenance of light rail.
And Bus Rabbit Transit.
Yeah.
That in fact, over sixty percent of the funding was for BRT.
I think that's a nuance that would not, was probably not considered much during the course of the election, so. It turned into a de facto referendum on light rail, in my opinion, and it was defeated in Washougal fifty-eight, forty-two.
Yeah, to, to some degree. I mean, the, the, one of the gentlemen that spoke on Saturday, you know, like he said, hey, I'm, I'm a fan of the bridge, I'm a fan of light rail. I just don't think that, but I voted against the sales tax, because I don't think that's the way to fund it, that sales tax.
Exactly, yeah.
And that, that's where I say I, I know what the numbers were, but I don't know that that really tells me that somebody's against CRC. There you've got somebody in front, or the, the light rail, you've got somebody in front of you saying, I'm a fan of it, I just don't want to pay for it through sales tax.
And certainly with the Chamber, the Vancouver Chamber of Commerce coming out in opposition to it and in favor of the bridge, it, it's, uh, it's not at all clear that that was a referendum on the bridge or even on light rail.
I think that's pretty rare to have that depth of perspective on it, and I think the voting public for the most part, let's, was looking at whether or not it was light rail or not. Rock? Let's do this, we're at six-thirty. We all know the issues there, and we can certainly bring it up during council meeting, during council comments as well, and flesh us out a little bit more.
Okay.
I would not hesitate to send anything that you've got to Dave. It doesn't need to be during the meeting, you can just electronically send stuff to him. And then we can chat more about the question of how this comes about, timing-wise and that type of thing. There is nothing, I don't believe, and Jennifer stepped out of the room, I don't believe that there's anything that precludes us from sending you all drafts of resolutions and asking you to individually comment back to David on that, not to each other. Don't break the Open Meetings Act, but to send back, and we can be, it's going to generate some time going back and forth in different drafts, and we can then send out and say, this has been further refined, here's some things. Obviously, we'd like to do that as few times as possible to preserve whoever's time in crafting this resolution, so. But for the moment, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We've got half an hour before the city council meeting starts, and anything that we've got additionally under council comments, we can also bring up during that meeting itself. Excellent idea. See you, Hall, in thirty minutes. Write down your question.